Good evening, I'm Alan Jones, Mayor of Winston-Salem. It's my pleasure to call to order this October 21st meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council, and I ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Monday.
Present.
Councilmember CPO.
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council with me in a moment of silence? Thank you so much, and would you join the city council with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Our sergeant in arms tonight is Lieutenant Jameson Kelter. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. I'd like to recognize our city manager, Pat Pate, for comments as usual.
Thank you. Several things tonight. First, let me introduce again to you, I know many of you had the chance to meet our newest Assistant City Manager Sharon Boydah. She comes to us from Bend, Oregon, where she has 20 years of local government experience with the last three years as an Assistant City Manager there. She oversaw multiple departments, including finance, budget, procurement, clerk, court system, facilities, real estate, urban renewal, the airport, amongst some other things. She does have strong ties here to North Carolina, however, having her bachelor's and master's degrees in accountancy from UNCW and a family in Rocky Mount where she was raised. We're excited to have her join us, and I'll give her a chance to say a few words.
Please, Sharon.
Is that on? Okay. Yeah, so thanks for the introduction and for having me. Manager Pate hit on a lot of the points that I wanted people to know, that I know I'm moving here from across the country, but I do have ties. I lived in North Carolina for 25 years, so I'm really excited to be back, and I love local government, love working for cities, so I'm just really happy to be here and look forward to working with all of the staff and all of you more.
Right. And just leaving Oregon as they become number one in the country. Sorry, what ward do you live in?
I think that was a loaded question.
She has moved into the city of Winston-Salem, which we are extremely appreciative of the fact that she found a house to live in the city. They are hard to come by. Some additional announcements, leaf collection will begin on November 4th. So the city will service two quadrants at a time this year, starting in the eastern and southern quadrants, which covers areas east of US 52 and south of Salem Parkway. Once those quadrants have been serviced, crews will move to the western and northern quadrants and then back and forth through the timeframe. I think we had a very good leaf season last year, and so we're looking forward to continuing to enhance the program and have a good season this year as well. The city is seeking applicants to serve on the Civil Service Board. The board is authorized to conduct hearings on certain actions appealed by police and fire personnel. Details on how to apply and the functions of the board can be found on our website, so we'd encourage anyone that might be interested to go and look at that about how to get one of those positions. You do have to run for, in an election for police and fire, to start with on those. The Winston-Salem Transit Authority is seeking input back from residents on the system, and they have a survey regarding proposed bus route changes to improve the way residents get around on the website. So the online survey is available until November 16th at W S T R A N S I T dot Winston-Salem Transit dot com. So we encourage everyone to take that survey if you are interested. In terms of some other events, the Budget and Performance Management Department is hosting in-person public engagement sessions to receive input on strategic planning and city priorities this month in preparation for meetings with council after the first of the year. These are all drop-in sessions between 5:30 and 7:00. The first one is happening tonight at the Georgia Taylor Rec Center. There will be another one tomorrow night, Tuesday, at the Sprague Street Rec Center, and then next week on Tuesday, the 29th, at the Carl Russell Rec Center, and on the 30th, at the Polo Park Recreation Center. So we encourage the community to come out and give their input on strategic priorities that you'd like to see happen over the next several years in the city. In addition to the public engagement sessions, there will be some focus group meetings for members of the business community, nonprofit community, neighborhood associations, and other institutional organizations. If you can't attend one of the sessions, there's also an opportunity to fill out a survey, again, online at cityofwinstonssalem.org backslash strategic plan, and we'll be reviewing all that information and getting and consolidating that for city council review, in addition to the resident survey information and the comprehensive planning survey information that has already been collected. On Saturday, October 26th, the Human Relations DEI Department will host its annual International Village Festival at Corporateing Plaza from noon to 5:00. There will be music and food from around the world, all representative of the cultural diversity that we have here in the city of Winston-Salem. Park Recreation and Parks is hosting Boo at Bathabra the Saturday, August, October 26th, from 1:30 to 4:30 PM at Bathabra Park. Visitors are encouraged to dress in their Halloween costumes and enjoy ghost stories, a scavenger hunt, face painting, and many other family-friendly activities. And then finally, in terms of events, Department of Transportation is going to be hosting a public meeting on Monday, October 28th, to discuss the 2050 Metropolitan Transit Plan and prioritization. Again, this is a chance for residents to engage with the city to help plan our transportation future. So I know that's a lot of events going on, and I encourage you to go to the website for residents to hit on those that are of most interest to you to attend. Finally, and we're going to show a little slideshow here, we want to give a heartfelt thank you to many city employees who have been deployed to western North Carolina. They're working long days in difficult conditions, both physically and emotionally. We're proud of their dedication and determination to helping our neighbors, and the departments that have been deployed include emergency management, fire, utilities, and police, and I believe we've sent somebody from planning and development as well. So I think they put together a brief slideshow marketing has to show you some of those employees And again, a thank you to, we have some very dedicated public servants here in the city that are out trying to help their fellow neighbors in the western part of the state. Unfortunately, we don't show a lot of pictures of them actually in action at those places for a lot of reasons, but basically that's, we'd be adding to, we don't want folks that are already suffering a lot of devastation to think their pictures are being shown just kind of general broadcast, but those are our employees that are out there, and they're seeing and doing quite a bit, and we do appreciate all their efforts. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll stand ready if there's any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Pate? Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mr. Pate, for the employees or the city providing some resources, will we continue to do that as long as we are asked, whether it's by the municipalities or the state or our emergency responsiveness plan?
Yes, Mayor Protem, the two parts of that, we are only responding to areas that have need, so when there's a call for a specific need or services that we can fulfill, then we're responding to those, and we're, in all cases, making sure that we can continue to provide services to our community and our residents first. But again, these are a lot of dedicated employees that are basically taking time that they probably would have had on, with their families or on vacation to go up and do this. We will be reimbursed by FEMA at some point in time for what we're doing there, but we will continue to assist as long as there's the need for us to assist.
Thank you.
Yeah, and certainly I'm sure the council joins me, especially in our appreciation to these employees for their work there. I did speak with Mayor Meyer from Asheville last week, and she was so grateful for cities across the state have stepped up to help her, as well as work we're doing in other parts of the western North Carolina as well. We'll now turn to the agendas, which is comprised of two parts, the consent agenda and the general agenda. As always, the practice of this council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by a council, by a full committee of the city council, or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless a council member requests that an item be removed from the agenda and considered individually. Items not removed will be enacted with one motion. Councilmembers, are there any items you'd like to remove?
C3.
C3. Is there a motion on the ballot?
Move to approve the remaining agenda.
Motion by Councilmember CPO, second by Councilmember Monday, I believe.
Clark.
Clark, to approve the ballots of the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that's unanimous, so we'll go now to item C3, please.
Item C3, resolution authorizing an agreement with NASCAR to pass through state motorsports assistance grant funds.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I don't know who would respond to this, but again, I think it's important that, okay, the city manager, it's important that we at least start to communicate this to the public.
And I totally agree, and I think you're referring to the clashes coming up in February and letting people know that that is ongoing. We do have a variety of efforts underway, but I will tell you, NASCAR has a marketing budget that probably surpasses our total operating budget in a lot of respects, so we will be relying heavily on them as doing that, but we will continue to do our part. And this particular grant, just since you've pulled it, is a pass-through grant, it is money that's coming from the state that was set aside specifically for motorsports activities, and this will go to improving lighting at Bowman Gray Stadium, which, just to be, so we can say for the public, is a city facility and will remain a city facility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the whole public, as this begins to roll out, because it's going to happen very fast, I think we got, what, about four months, maybe, three and a half, that the whole world will be watching NASCAR happening at Bowman Gray Stadium in February, so looking forward to it. With that, Mayor, members of the council, I move for approval.
Second. Thank you. Second by Councilmember Taylor, any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Thank you, that's unanimous. We'll now go to the general agenda, which is comprised of six public hearings made up of zoning items as well as an annexation item. When the public hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If there is opposition to one of the zoning cases, the proponents and opponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentation and three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the council will consider the item. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, as well as on the city's YouTube page, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 AM and tomorrow, Wednesday night, at 9:00 PM. Copies of our agenda are always available online, as well as videos of previous meetings. Just click on the watch meetings online link. May we have item one, please?
Item G1, public hearing and consideration of a resolution for the voluntary annexation of approximately 19.8 acres located west of the confluence of Brookbury Farm Circle and Rosewind Lane and south of Brookbury Farm Circle. Community Development Housing General Government Committee recommends unanimous approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed voluntary annexation of these properties? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and this did come from the General Government Committee. Mayor Protem?
I move for approval of item G1. I think that might have been wrong.
Councilmember Clark may want to make this one.
I'm trying to take my job.
Why not?
I move for approval of item, item G1.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem Adams, any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous, thank you. Item G2, please.
Item G2, public hearing and consideration of zoning petition of City of Winston-Salem W 3628 from County M U S to City M U S. Property is located in the west ward. Planning Board recommends unanimous approval of petition.
Again, this is a public hearing, it's basically just moving the county zoning to the city zoning. Is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed zoning Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember Clark.
Thank you. As was just mentioned, we've now annexed the land then, we now have to change it from county zoning to city zoning, it's the same zoning, just a different prefix on it. I would like to put a plug in for, I forgot the name, but the, the Brookbury Farms, this is the 11th section that we have, that they've started, they'll finish, get a section going once it's moved along, then they'll start section 2, 3, 4, up to number 11 now. It's been very successful. Anyway, I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W 3628.
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem Adams, any discussion, questions? All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous, thank you, Mr. Clark. Item G3.
Item G3, public hearing and consideration of zoning petition of Richard Dillard, W 3629, from RS9 to HBL. Property is located in the southeast ward. Planning Board recommends unanimous approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? I know the petitioner is here, if there are any questions. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W dash 3629.
There's a second by Mayor Protem Adams, any discussion or questions? If not, please indicate by voting yes, if you're in favor of this, and no, if you're And that is unanimous, thank you. May we have item G4, please?
Item G4, public hearing and consideration of a zoning petition of Green Thumbs, W 3630, from IM18 to PBL. Property is located in the northeast ward. Planning Board recommends unanimous approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Again, the petitioner is here, if there are any questions? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W dash 3630.
Second.
Motion, and second by Councilmember CPO, any discussion, questions? If those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous, thank you very much. Do we have item G5, please?
Item G5, public hearing and consideration of a zoning petition of Puff Town Center, W 3631, from LB to GBS. Property is located in the northwest ward. Planning Board recommends unanimous approval of petition.
Thank you. Again, is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? The petitioner is here for questions? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember McIntosh.
I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W dash 3631.
Second.
Thank you. Second by Councilmember CPO, any discussion, questions on this item? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous, thank you. And item G6.
Item G6, public hearing and consideration of a zoning petition of KNV, W 3632, from HB and RS9 to GBS. Property is located in the north ward. Planning Board recommends unanimous approval of petition.
Thank you. Again, is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and recognize Mayor Protem Adams.
Thank you. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W 3632.
Second. Thank you. Second by Councilmember McIntosh, any discussion, questions on this item? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Thank you, that is unanimous. We'll now go to the public comment period, which is a time once per month that the city council invites residents to express their opinions and issues that are germane to city government, to the city council and myself. We, when your name is called, if you would come forward, give your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. You'll see a screen on there that gives you the timing, and we limit our total time to 30 minutes. First person that signed up is Samuel Gaverman. Good evening.
I have some, I am a resident at...
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Samuel Gaverman. I reside at 24 Salem Gardens Drive in Winston-Salem, in the southeastern section of the city.
Thank you.
My issue of contention is with the property management and their, their, their relationship to the, to the residents. We have had, we've had some issues with management. We went from ambling, and then we are now taken over by another property management called Orbach Housing Affordability Solutions. And the problem is that this was completely unknown to us until about two and a half weeks prior to their arrival. The, the property management that took over has been, has been wanting to renovate apartments, and a lot of the apartments have been, a lot of the residents have been coming back to apartments that are substandard. I have, I have a list, I have, and I wish to submit it into the public record for consideration.
Very good. Chris, would you take that and give it to the city clerk, please?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I am Kevon Thurman, Vice Chancellor for University Advancement at Winston-Salem State University, located at 601 South Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, and I am the proud newest member of Chancellor Bonita Brown's leadership team, and look forward to making Winston-Salem my home for years to come. On behalf of Winston-Salem State University, I want to express condolences to Councilmember Annette CPO on the recent passing of your brother. WSSU appreciates your hard work representing us and others in the east ward, so we want to acknowledge you and your family. Thanks again to Mayor Jones and the city for the, for last month's proclamation recognizing September 27th as Winston-Salem State University Day. Happy to announce that our 2024 Day of Giving resulted in us raising $401,000 with 1,352 donors. I'd like to invite all members of the public to take part in our homecoming 2024 activities, which start November 3rd, which include coming to the game. I'd like to highlight the WSSU Community Homecoming Parade, starting in downtown Winston-Salem at Research Parkway and Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. Join us, along with the parade route, to see the Red Sea of Sound, WSSU's chancellor, Chancellor Bonita Brown, and many of the dignitaries in the room here tonight. Game is Saturday afternoon at 1:00 PM on November 9th, where we go head-to-head with WSSU against Fayetteville State. Please note that the complete list of events are on our website. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Winston-Salem State University is the city's public university and the only college universities to bear the city's name. Homecoming events are not only a source of pride for the city of Winston-Salem State, but also another reminder of our school's economic impact on this community. I'd like everyone to know that no matter if you attended WSSU, worked for the school, know someone affiliated with Winston-Salem State University, or just live in Winston-Salem, you are all part of what we affectionately refer to ourselves as the rambling. Please connect with us on social media and support us year-round by donating your time, talent, and treasure. Thanks again for the time this evening, and we look forward to working with you and getting to know you all better in the coming weeks and months. Go Rams!
Thank you very much, and welcome to Winston-Salem.
Good evening. Good evening. Ben Holder, 1300 Oak Street, Greensboro, North Carolina. I was a resident of Winston-Salem at one time, and 2009, Winston-Salem was really good to me. Salem College was good to me. Downtown Elementary School was good to me, I got a lot of fond memories. However, I'm here to talk about something that's not that comfortable, but I'm here to help. I'm here to help. I saw the Public Safety Committee meeting from last Monday, and there was an uncomfortable topic that was talked about, the IMBs and human trafficking and slavery and that kind of thing. I want you to know that I've been heavily involved, including in Winston-Salem in 2009. including in Winston-Salem in 2009. I did a human trafficking awareness campaign. And I'm just coming to tell you that I just finished eradicating them all in the city of Greensboro without the city's help. I know that y'all talked about Greensboro's ordinance and passing it and all that. And Mr. Taylor, I want to tell you that, as you well know, you can pass every ordinance you want, but if you don't enforce it, it's really not worth anything. One of the other comments about that industry you talked about eloquently, I thought you led that meeting very well, was, you know, how urgent of a situation is it? I'd like to add, it's pretty urgent. I would like for you to know that for every Starbucks, you have a place in Winston-Salem that is conducting business where people could be held under indentured servitude, human trafficking, slavery. The biggest point of that is how big of an issue, how big of a problem is it? The people that live next to them, it's a really big problem. A very big problem. I know where they are. I've tracked them. I almost a year ago contacted every single landlord in Winston-Salem and told them, this is what's going on in your building. Nobody budged. It worked in Greensboro, but what I'm telling you is, you got it. It's here. It's all over the nation. And you have a state law where you could go close them all down tomorrow. It's against the law to operate that kind of business without a state establishment license. In 1995, it was passed that you cannot practice massage without a license. Goldsboro shut theirs down without any ordinance by using state law. I worked with Carthage, North Carolina. They shut theirs down with no ordinance using state law. The long-drawn-out, multi-jurisdictional investigations oftentimes involve prostitution charges. However, to get that prostitution charge, an undercover officer gets naked and gets a massage and, you know, gets touched in a sexual manner. That has to stop because you can't be a victim and a criminal. A cop has no business stealing the labor from this immigrant woman. I think that it's a little more urgent than the way it was presented. I know the officer talked about the house that was in between the salon and the, and the church. After they closed it, that opened back up. And I was the one that alerted the media that it was still open. And a story came out, and the police parked a car out there, and it was closed. They just simply moved their operation.
Mr. Holder, your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cynthia Herschel.
Herschel, you know my name by now. How y'all doing?
Doing good, Ms. Trump.
Councilpeople, my name is Cynthia Herschel, 1100 Willie Davis Drive. I am here in regards to Section 3, but I do want to talk about, you all need to revisit Cleveland Avenue. Where y'all cut out the traffic and redirected it, it's getting cold. That is a long walk for these people and their kids to go to Ashley School. You all need to revisit that. Also, I want to talk about what's the intent behind Section 3 of the HUD Act of 1968. It is to ensure that economic opportunities were directed to low and very low-income people, especially residing in the community where the assistance is provided. Its primary purpose is to create pathway to employment, training, contracting, and other economic opportunity. That ain't happening over there at Cleveland Homes. Y'all know that. You all allow McCormick Baron and Bloom to come over there and tell us that they do not have to employ none of the residents and that they got their own crew? That's got to stop. I had three people that completed the training at Goodwill. They are still waiting on some other kind of training to complete their self-sufficient, their goals towards self-sufficient and empowerment. That's not being done. I'm asking y'all so nicely to help us out and to make sure that Blooms and McCormick Baron are held accountable, and they are being transparent with what they are not doing. You can put up a sign that with a scanning code, but if you ain't getting no reply back, nobody is calling, what good is that? That's just a bunch of hypocrisy and mockery. Y'all are really playing with our intelligence, and that's something that I do not like because they realize one of y'all are very intelligent. And for the person on whom ever represent us and our community, we really would like for you all to stand up and do something in regards to this Section 3. Do something with these three people and the rest of them who are included, who wants to do something with their life and who do not want to just sit around and collect benefits, which doesn't add up to that much. But again, I would like for you all to revisit Cleveland Homes, revisit the Section 3, demand that McCormick Baron and Bloom hire some of these residents and put them outside to work. Thank you. Y'all have a good day. And also, I would like to inform y'all, Dr. Nita Miles got a book out called Homelessness in Winston-Salem. Y'all need to buy that book and get some education because it's now, it's needed. Thank y'all. Y'all have a good day.
Olivia Doyle.
Olivia Doyle, 112 West Devonshire. So this month, Councilmember Monday and City Manager Pate offered to meet with the attendees of the press conference that Haight Out hosted on the front steps outside concerning Bear. And we called upon our community members to join this conference and voice their experiences requesting Bear, some of which have been positive, but some of which have been concerningly negative. With 911, either county or city, it's unclear, refusing to dispatch the Bear team or cops refusing to defer to Bear team members. And after voicing our experiences, conference attendees developed three core demands of the city, which I will reiterate here, and we iterated in that meeting. The first is increased transparency. What that specifically means is providing full transparency into Bear's operations. Based on the info that we learned during the meeting with City Manager Director Ryan and Fire Chief Mayo, this also includes the publication of Bear's weekly meeting times, that 2:00 PM on Thursdays, and locations, which seems to generally be Fire Station 13, I think, on the city's website and social media, with considerations for more accessible meeting time, as well as increased marketing of Bear in community spaces. I think it was Phil Carter that said putting that up in barbershop salons, grocery stores. The second is community oversight, and this is probably the most important. That consists of establishing a community oversight board to ensuring accountability and transparency, both in Bear operations and city spending on policing that could be reallocated. At least 51% of this committee should be made of impacted community members or organizations which are neither nonprofits nor funded by the city or the county in any capacity. The third would be adequate funding. If Manager Pate's recommended budget includes Bear as a line item, which, as was alluded to us, please approve that budget and reallocate monies from those burn memorial grants, which usually go to police technology to Bear because it should be federally, it should federally qualify. We voiced these three demands at the meeting with, as I said, City Manager Pate, Bear Director Ryan, and Fire Chief Mayo, and we now request that council members support a follow-up meeting, which would be open to the general public, not just members of Haight Out or the comrades that came to that press conference, to hear the results of city employees' investigations into our demands, as well as the itinerant questions which were asked regarding spending on homelessness, defenses against ICE, especially as HB10 is being brought up, and companion demands of the county's follow-up services. As Phil Carter mentioned, it is in the council's interest to have publicly accessible, transparent community forums if you want to ensure that Bear is a well-executed, genuine police alternative that serves the needs of residents who have been or may be brutalized by cops. Thank you.
Thank you. Talia Gary.
Talia Gary, 128 Turner Street. Per Manager Pate's recommendation, we went to County Commissioner last week to ask how integrated Bear is into the mental health and substance use partner providers. And Denise Price of Behavioral Services reached out to us to discuss our questions. We were given the same procedure from the county as we've given, gotten from the city. A public demand is stilled into a closed meeting, but what we still haven't been told is why the city and county are not hosting these meetings as public forums themselves. Essentially, what we're, what the barriers to the city and county, sorry, collaboration on the essential services of Bear, MIH, mobile integrated healthcare, and the county partner services. So that's what we would like to know.
Thank you very much. Gali Hassan.
Gali Hassan, 5116 Britt Road, Winston-Salem to 7105. I'm here tonight to speak in reference to the Cleveland Avenue Homes Project. I submitted information, or my wife's company did, prior to the demolition over there. And I know everybody in the city sees it going on. And spoke to Mr. Kirshaw and all the people at Bloom, so they're like they didn't know we were applying for the, as a subcontractor for the demolition. And at this stage of the game, we were denied opportunity. And we are saying, we would like to see from the city and the housing authority the initial development plan that they had planned to use on this project prior to its starting. We would like to see the e-verification of all the people that's worked there so we can determine should they have been there in the first place. And second of all, we would like to see the certified payrolls, and they better match with the e-verification. If not, then somebody might need to go to jail. Maybe start playing chess with Pete Diddy. That's where I think you ought to be if you are illegally doing these jobs. I don't care how big Bloom is. I don't care how big the city is or the housing authority. You still have a federal obligation and mandate to do this. And if you don't show it to us, you got something to hide. If you ain't got nothing to hide, show us the paperwork so we can determine what they're making, who's making it, and are they supposed to be making it? And if we were getting exactly what they were getting, it'd be better than nothing. Quit hiding the truth. And Ms. Burke, this is your ward, and we want to hold you accountable for everything that we don't see. And if you say tonight that you will share this information with the citizens and the residents who actually live there, ought to be the ones working first, not somebody from Kalamazoo. And if you don't do it, you're going to see more people down here in the very near future.
Abigail Lightfoot.
Hi, my name's Abigail Lightfoot, and I live on 2129 Storm Canyon. I'm here to echo people who have gone before me about the sustained future for Bear. We need a committee comprised of citizens for community oversight and transparency in reports and 911 calls. Citizens should be able to view how calls are handled so that we know that Bear is being dispatched accurately and timely. We also request information on the criteria in determining when the Bear team is dispatched. Our hope is that no police are involved in this process. We also require that the Bear team itself do not involve the police in handling these calls. For example, advising that callers hang up and call 911 instead. In order to better serve the community, the community should be able to establish policies and procedures, or, sorry, the committee should be able to establish policies and procedures that ensure the safety of the Bear team and those that they serve. We hope that the Bear team is respecting the dignity of those they serve and actually follow up after services have been rendered after the initial call. The committee, the committee should also establish adequate funding that provides support to the team without fear of losing funding. The Bear team is a wonderful concept that can help many people, but only if it is actually used effectively. Thank you.
Thank you very much. LaChandra Harrison.
Good evening, y'all. I want to just shed some more exposure on what is happening in Salem Gardens. We have been greatly disadvantaged and displaced within this renovation that we are currently under. We were promised transportation for our kids, food vouchers, as well as full use of the kitchenette within our rooms. The hotel choice is on the west side of town where we live, on the southeast side of town, where our children mostly attend the schools in Kernersville or Waukatah. The induction burner only works if we have metal utensils. Many of us didn't have that, and we recorded a price of $39.99 to use their materials. We haven't received a utility check since August, so a lot of us didn't have the money to spare to rent such materials. A lot of residents did not have access to transportation, which caused majority of our kids to miss school. We were told by the property management to text and call them with our requests, and they went ignored. At one point, our property manager, Yvonne Baxter, said there were no funds available for the kids. We had residents going without AC in the hottest months of the summer leading into today. A great many more didn't have working thermostats, so that means their heat is not functioning as well. The new equipment, dishwasher, dish disposal, microwave, and stove is not in working order in many of the renovated units. We have excessive plumbing issues in which the property management chose to snake the plumbing from one apartment, which led to other units becoming flooded with sewage via the bathtub and toilet. There are residents, myself included, who have open cases with the city inspectors, and the property managers choose to lie and report our cases as close to the city council members when we have physical evidence of the opposite. The property managers choose to tell their higher-ups that they want us to come to them first for any issues, but when we do, we have been put out of the office, disrespected, and treated as if our issues are insignificant. We have plenty of other mitigating circumstances, as well as physical evidence to back those claims as well. I'd also like to add that since, I'd say, June or July, when we first became in, to contact with Orbach and the OAHS Property Management Company, they have disrespected us residents. They do not come to us with any kind of respectful tone. And if we were to return that kind of attitude, we are treated as if we were second-class citizens. We have been put out of the property manager's office, and a lot of us have been placed in hotel where we were guaranteed 30 days, well over 45 days, myself included. We have children that have been disadvantaged with missing school as well as missing meals because they have to depend on their parents making certain ends meet because we have no utility checks. We have no prospect of them coming at any certain point in time, and a lot of these parents are single-parent and unemployed. So if y'all would please send exposure and please send the resources to us in Salem Gardens, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank y'all.
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
LaChandra Harrison, 13 Salem Gardens Drive, Apartment A is in Apple, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27107.
Thank you very much. Tina Wheeler.
My name is Tiana Wheeler. I'm also a member of 17 Salem Gardens Drive, Unit C. As the previous LaChandra just said, we have a bunch of problems. In my apartment, I have holes in my bottom of my sink. The water's coming from the sink. In my bathroom, the tub knob turns all the way too hot, and I have to turn down the thermostat so it could be cool for the kids to get in. My son, he's the baby back there. He burnt his leg. So I told the office, and there's nothing that they can do, that's what they said, for us to just to turn down everything. I've been in Salem Gardens since 2016. I've been asking for a four-bedroom. Everybody has moved into a four-bedroom but me. I have five kids. My oldest son is 14, and he needs his own bedroom. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Vivian Joyner.
My name is Vivian Joyner, 210 Vintage Avenue. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. Thank you for letting me speak to you this evening. I'm talking about parking. I know that there were some hearings or public forums to talk about and understand what the citizens wanted as far as parking downtown, understanding that the old meters are debunked, they need to go. In some cases, there are some kiosses around that you can pay either cash or card. And apparently, the, the new program does not allow for that. They, no one ever said whether those were working properly or not, but that's what they had. I, I felt that it was very unfortunate that you would hold public hearings and then not respond to what the public said they needed or wanted. So the, the proposal that was out prior to the public hearing with no adjustment is the, apparently, what's coming to the council for, for a what's going to the council for, for a vote. If you want a public hearing, you want to know what the public needs, but you have no intention of adjusting at all to the public's request, that's wrong. There's a waste of money in doing a public hearing. It's a waste of time for city employee, for citizen, and everything in between to hold a public hearing without the intent of responding with action to it. I hope that when the vote comes to the full council, that there's some kind of consideration for the people that work downtown, the people that live downtown, the people that support downtown. There's not enough parking on the street. We have parking decks, but to go from 25 cents an hour, 25 cents minimum to park, to a dollar and 50 cents minimum to park, is an unreasonable rate change. Any business has to raise their rate, but to go from zero to 100 just that quick, I don't think it's fair. I don't think that the city is doing the best they can do for the citizens in this regard in this way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Joyner. Councilmembers, we're right at our 30-minute timeframe. Without objection, there are three more people who have signed up without objection. I'd like to hear from them. Good, thank you. Pam Phillips?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Phillips and I have two homes. One is 1265 Arbor Road, the other one is 1423 North Main Street. Pay a lot of taxes, especially on Arbor Road. And every time I call, City Link's 311, whether it's about my trash or the recycle, I get the runaround. On September the 27th, I have a text, I mean, an email here that I sent to Mr. Pate. I never got a response. I kept calling, I kept calling, I kept calling. In this email, I said that I have been waiting for about a month. I was told to leave my recycle bin on the curb, 1265 Arbor Road. Was never picked up until I finally got in touch with Mr. Owens. Not only did he do something about it, he came out and met me at 1265 Arbor Road. Then he followed me to my other property, 1423 North Main. I don't feel that it's right for taxpayers to have to beg 311 to get somebody to call you. And then you get a letter telling you that your issue has been resolved, and I'm like, please tell me when because my container is still sitting on the curb where it has been sitting for almost a month now. I have an issue with that. I paid too many tax dollars at 1265 Arbor Road for my container to sit out there for a month because I'm begging somebody to come by and pick it up. And so I would at least, like, not only for myself, but even my neighbors at 1423, when they don't come by and pick it up, at least acknowledge the phone call and don't send us mail saying that the issue has been resolved when it hasn't been resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Doreen Pollak, I think.
Good evening.
My name is Doreen Pollak. I live at 1401 North Main Street, Providence Square. I have two things. I had a pipe to bust up under my house. I called City Link. City Link is a joke. When I talked to the person, I told them that I heard something bust up under my house. They immediately sent somebody out to cut the water off, which was a plus. When I had my son to come and repair the problem, I called City Link for them to come back and cut the water on. She asked me for my name, my address, and my social security number. I asked her, what do my social security number have to do with them coming to cut my water back on, where you did ask me for my social security number to cut it off? They refused to cut my water on that day. This was like 9 o'clock. I called back at 4:00, so that means my water was off because I had to go to work. And I called and talked to a young lady. Again, she asked me for my social security number and I told her I would not give my social security number out. I said, if there are any other way that I can have my water cut back on. She was real nice and she said, do you have the account number? So I gave her the account number and they came and turned my water on. What is it the policy with the city that you have to give your social security number to have your water turned on when you pay your bill? I did not like that. That mean I had to go all day without water, without bottled water. And number two, I forgot what number two was. Oh, the church that I talked about last week, and I thank you, Mr. Clark, for listening to me when we was at the place, and you, Mr. Joyce. That church is beginning to be worse. You're getting more and more people coming in that church. They are taking people furniture off their porch. I know homeless people have somewhere to go and my heart goes out to them, but they shouldn't have a right to camp out at that church. It's a fight every weekend. I call the police every weekend. You got guys running after each other, fighting each other, cussing and everything else. Somebody turned the lights on. They said that the people only cut the lights on. Then I think Duke Power came and turned the lights off. They are beginning to come on people's property, stealing their furniture and all kind of stuff off their porch. So can't that church be held as a nuisance? Because I heard that the people that owns the church do not live in Winston-Salem. They don't even live in North Carolina. So how can we get this straightened up in our neighborhood because it's making our neighborhood like a crime? Then they're beginning to now come on the post office on the side of 14th Street and gather there as well. And I can talk to you more about that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pollak. And final speaker, Derwin Montgomery?
Mayor, members of the council, Mayor Pro Tem, great to be before you. One issue to raise or not issue, but actually encouragement this evening, and that is for the council to move forward expeditiously with implementation and execution of the housing program guidelines. It is over 10 years of conversation that I know of that the council has been engaged in dialogue about what does it look like to properly facilitate funding and resources to produce affordable housing in this community. It has been a subjective process up until this time, and I know that some of the issues and concerns that have been raised are valid in the sense of ensuring equity. And what I would suggest in that matter is that within the first, the 60 to 90 days after the first distribution of funds in this process, that the council pause, bring back to community development, housing, general government, a report on what happened, who received funds, what were the demographics of the folks who actually applied for those resources, what were the reasons why they were denied, so that it is clear and transparent to the community why certain groups received funding and why other groups did not receive funding. It's not behind closed doors, but it's fully transparent for the entire community to understand and know, but we cannot continue to function properly without some type of framework and guidelines. And I believe staff has done an amazing job of going out to peer cities and communities, coming back and collaborating with our community organizations to say, hey, this will work for us and the city of Winston-Salem. I think citizens will be better. I think the city will be better. And those numbers that the council has suggested for development actually can happen and we'll start seeing more development and construction in our community. This information was presented to Affordable Housing Coalition and the folks on the members of Affordable Housing Coalition supported the passage of the guidelines as they were presented to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. I'll declare the public comment period closed and would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
We don't have one. So we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem, second by Councilmember President Pio to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, we are adjourned.